Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 19th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new application, Verizon Cell Tower. This is going to be proposed to be located on the Anderson Center for Autism campus, located very near an existing AT&amp;T cell tower. At the same time, the applicants have slipped in a proposal to add a pool enclosure over the pool. At any rate, Mr. Olson, welcome back. It's good to see you. I'm going to turn the table at the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you also. My name is Scott Olson. I am with the law firm of Young Summer and I represent Verizon Wireless. So you have before you an application for what we call small cell facility. I don't know if you're familiar with them. It's going to be on the proposed for the Anderson School. There's a tower out there right now. AT&amp;T's got a small wooden tower. That's even though it's a smaller facility, that's not a small cell facility because they have a bunch of different antennas up there. We're only talking about a 62-foot wooden utility pole, two small antennas. It's designed to serve the school area and a little bit beyond that, parts of Route 9, but it's not what you would typically see this, you know, 80, 90, 100-foot-plus towers with the 12 antennas. That was coming.
Kind of like the next we're going to propose, yes.
On March 4th. Yeah, that's for another day. So, but this is a before, we need, we had a need for this site and we looked at the AT&amp;T tower. And the one thing that you may notice if you look at our application materials, that AT&amp;T tower, the antennas right now, the top just sits at the top of the tree line or just slightly above the tree line. If we were to put our antennas on that tower, they would be below the tree line. And that is just very simple. It just doesn't work for us. We wouldn't do it because it's not worth it. Rick Andrews is here. He's a Verizon Wireless RF engineer and he could explain a lot more about that than I could.
If you trim the trees, could you do it?
Trim the trees?
Actually, that's one of my points. I'm going to say, what about topping off the trees around it? That's not meant rudely. It's just, it seems logical that if you're saying that you can't put it on below the tree height, what about lowering the tree height?
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be a big project because you'd have to take down a lot of trees.
I didn't say take the trees down, just top them.
Yeah, but, well, I'm not an arborist, but, or, or, arborist, sorry.
And there's no such thing in this state. It's not licensed or anything else. Anybody can call themselves an arborist.
Okay, well, I'm not one. And I don't know what that would do to the trees, but it wouldn't work for us because it'd be a lot of topping, not just immediately surrounding them. We have to basically be above not only the immediately surrounding trees, but also the trees that, don't forget, we're at a lower elevation than Route 9 as it slopes down from Route 9 to the river. We're still trying to get our signal up to Route 9 and there are a lot of trees to get over there. So you'd have to top everything. I mean, it'd be a massive haircut.
When you say everything, how much do you mean by everything? You mean it surroundings?
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to look at the trees that surround the buffer between Route 9 and the school. I was just driving down there. There's a, there's a good buffer there. You'd have to make, look to see if those will have to be topped down. It's not something that Verizon would even consider. I mean, I think they would, if that was the directive, they'd probably say, thanks, that's.
It just seemed, it seemed to sort of beg the question of why you weren't looking at that, that's all. And by the way, if you're interested, if you top a tree, it will send out new leaders for the most part. Chris is nodding, he's a landscaper. It doesn't, in other words, it doesn't usually hurt the tree or kill it.
Okay.
But if we're going to have a huge impact, I don't, I just had to throw that out there, put it that way.
I appreciate the question. My, what I would say is, look at the balloons that we floated. I was driving by the site on the way here and I know where the AT&amp;T tower was and I had to squint just to see the little tiniest silhouette of it with leaves on the trees. You don't see that tower from Route 9. I guarantee it.
No, and I should add, just for your own edification, that when you, I think in a letter or in one of the materials, talked about how we might be discriminating against you if we treated any differently than the AT&amp;T tower. The AT&amp;T tower came here for forgiveness, not permission, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand.
It was already up.
I understand.
So it was discovered and they had to come through. But I don't, myself, think this is a big issue. You can't see the AT&amp;T tower from any sensitive.
Correct.
A historical point. It's not really visible from the river. It's too small to see. And you're proposing one approximately the same height in the same area.
Exactly correct, yes. So, and if you looked at our plans, the, we're taking up a 10-by-10, you know, foot area. It's 100 square feet. So it's a tiny portion of the property. But it's on a ridge that is, that's a little higher than where the AT&amp;T tower sits. There's a property line that's about, I don't know what it is, 50 feet or so away. We have to be 68 feet away. We looked at moving that tower closer to Route 9, but when you do that, you go down a very steep ravine and it presents constructibility issues, et cetera. So unfortunately, that wouldn't work. So we have an application for an area variance before the ZBA and then we have a public hearing set for the 26th of this month.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
I think that's it. Let's have any questions.
Ms. Axelson, comments?
First of all, you know, I didn't intend to get this into you all so late, so pardon me. But I did go through code chapter 101 pretty extensively just to see what needed to be done. So some of this is done in order of code chapter 101, which is the telecommunications towers and facilities code chapter for the town of Hyde Park. So I'm just going to touch on a couple of points. So what I didn't really see in there was the possibility explored of doing a different tower and sharing. For example, instead of the AT&amp;T tower, replacing that with something where AT&amp;T and Verizon could co-locate and whoever else is on that, at that existing site with a different tower. So that, that's what I raised in my comment number two. And I did forward this to your office.
I, yeah, I was on the road already.
Okay.
So I don't, I think I saw an email on my phone, but.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Would you like me to respond quickly or do you want to keep your?
Well, I just figured, let me touch on some points that the board may be interested in.
And, Mr. Olson, usually what we do is just have you send back a narrative, point-by-point response to it, rather than putting you on the spot immediately tonight.
Yep.
Happy to be on the spot.
Yeah.
But whatever the board prefers.
Right. And also, this is partly due to, my impression was that the board wanted to try to move this forward because it is a smaller tower. So I'm trying to show where we need to fill in blanks. In the site selection analysis, there's some information that needs to be provided to really prove that out. And then on the plans, I think we need a few more things labeled so we know what we're dealing with in terms of what, for example, it isn't really clear, is the pole actually a wood pole or is it some other material that is meant to look like wood? So those are some of the questions I have in there to add in those information, those bits of information, to label materials, color, texture on various things. Let's see. I think we need to fill in the blanks on future shared use a little bit more in terms of there being an agreement and maybe some plan notation to justify whether or not there is the possibility of, of shared use of the tower once it's up. Let's see. And then there, there, the easement seems to go on a bit of the town road, so we'll need that sort of squared away. There's a hash-marked area for the easement that's at the end of a town road, so you need to straighten that out. We'll need an easement agreement. I think the town would probably like for the easement agreement to include, in addition to access, maintenance, repair, and decommissioning by Verizon or others, use for emergency access, use by the town of Hyde Park for access for inspection, decommissioning, if that ever comes to pass, that kind of thing.
I'm sorry, just want to clarify. Are you suggesting that we would need an easement to use a public town road?
No. I'm suggesting that that, there's, there's, you show easement on the town road and that needs to be deleted, but then you have easement for the rest of it. And we don't have a lot of information on what does that access easement provide. I think it's Anderson Boulevard.
Yes.
Which is, it's an onsite road.
Right. Oh, so, yes, exactly.
Yes, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
No, no, that's why I wanted to just clarify.
Yeah. So we'll need some details on that. There's an, and we'll need you to clarify some zoning stuff. Apparently, part of the rear yard line that sort of faces the Hudson was considered to be a side yard, but it really isn't. So you'll need to straighten that out, but it looks like it still complies. I didn't find a report on non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation. And it's kind of up to the board whether you want that or not, but it is, it is in your code to have something. And most of the providers will provide kind of a typical statement about that. It would, I think it would be good to have for the record.
Did you say that again? Non-ionizing what?
A report about non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation. It's one of the things that.
Yeah, it's number 12.
Yep.
On the list.
Yep, it's number 12. And it's in your code. So I tried to cite the code all the way through. We'll need grading and drainage plans, although it wasn't clear to me that there was any grading, but I did speak with Pizza Taro and he wants to at least see an erosion-sedimentation control plan. On the road, it looks like an easement is just being drawn over Anderson Boulevard, which again is an onsite road, but it doesn't look like any improvements are proposed. It's just not clear.
Yeah, there are.
So there's some clarification needed. And then I saw the visual impact assessment. Well, it's not really. It's just exhibit 10. And it seems like it would help to have kind of cover page and narrative. And the one thing that's missing is a zone of visibility map. Again, I think it would be good for the board to look at that for the record, just in case. There are other points the board wanted to see. And the only thing I thought of was that at Norrie Point, there are viewpoints down by the shore, but I didn't know if the upper area of Norrie Point would have any kind of a view toward the tower. So if we had the zone of visibility map, usually it's done with topography and it would show areas with and without vegetation. And it's a nice guidepost for the board. I think that's pretty easy to produce if you have GIS folks there. And then I have a bunch of comments about setbacks, which is just a matter of putting that on the plan. I didn't find a survey or reference to a survey for the site.
Like for the whole property?
Not, I, I mean, I'm not sure how the board wants to handle that, but there's no, it's all, the main site plan references GIS information, I think. And site plan requirements typically require some kind of survey. Obviously, it is a huge site. So I don't know if there's a possibility of, and it's, there's no survey on file old, like, for the site?
There must be.
I would think.
I don't know.
Right.
They have a site plan that they have that we borrowed from them, but I don't know about the survey.
So it would be helpful to find out.
I think we just took the approach that it was, we know where it is and they, they do survey it. Well, let's see what I can get there. Usually a reference point that they do and it's just some minor.
Right. I guess I would suggest, see, see what there is on file and.
There is a survey. It's part of the master plan that was done.
Right.
And TAD has been allowing, when we have small internal sections of these kinds of sites that we don't, that, that, there's some notation that references back to the original survey because we're just isolating out the one section or the small sections that it's been done on.
Right.
Like, I think we did that with the tank farm, when they had the propane tank farm there and a few other things.
Right. And, and the way I worded it is to just have a copy of it on file with the planning board and make reference to it. It doesn't have to be part of the plan set. And then the EAF, it looked fine. I could tell that you prepared it using the database information from the full EAF mapper program. So one of my comments is to attach the pages, you know, the summary report. But there is archaeological sensitivity, so I didn't know if anybody had already done an upload to Chris to try to get a consultation started with the New York State Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation. And I think it would be a matter of uploading project description, project plans, maybe photographs of the site and to try to get some feedback from them and ultimately a sign-off, which I imagine you would probably need anyway, ultimately.
Yeah.
We'll need it for the planning board, but also for your other purposes. Anyway, it, there's a lot of, there are a lot of comments in here about trying to fill in, you know, the requirements for the telecommunications code. And I didn't see anything earth-shattering.
No, I read your memo beforehand and there's a lot of detail to it, but it's, a lot of it really is small, minor stuff to be added to the plans, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah. Once I take a look at it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Just wanted to get it out.
Thank you, Ms. Axelson. Ms. Paula Drow, any comments?
Well, just an overview comment is that I had trouble, and I think other people did as well, following your submission application because even the most recent one dated January 31st, 2020, has, you know, plans that are outdated in it. So you have to look at all three to have a complete application. So one thing that we're going to do tonight, if the board is ready to circulate this under seeker, you're going to authorize circulation but only once the applicant puts together a complete package.
I think you could, you could probably go, I made a list of all the most current stuff. I didn't list the old plans.
Okay.
I listed the new ones. I don't know if that helps.
So you'd have to put together, like, one of these bound ones that actually has the most recent plan sets, the applications, the letter of authorizations, because we had trouble piecing everything together.
Yeah, there were several submissions. We usually don't do that, but I guess, if you want that, that's fine. We've never done that with any town in my 25 years' experience. Like, if we revise plans and then you put submit a whole new book like that, but if that's what you're looking for.
Well, only because, only because you've already given us three or four books and it's too confusing at this point. So.
Ms. Moss deliberately did this to us. I'm not sure why. She said, I want to see what, I want everyone to see what they had to go through. I just want to see what the finished product is. Even I had a hard time, too.
So.
I had a hard.
I'm sure.
Time, too.
So we just want to, some full plan sets for circulation.
Okay.
And we have to send to county planning as well because.
Yes, it's on, located on the state highway.
Can you explain, though, the purpose of this easement? Who is it benefiting and?
The easement?
Yeah.
So the easement that we have is going to be with Anderson School just to allow us to use a portion of their private property for access and utilities.
Oh, so you're doing that via easement instead of a lease?
Well, it's, it's an easement within the lease, so it's.
Okay, so that's not something that I don't think the planning board really is concerned with?
Right, exactly. So it's, so what we have is, we have a lease agreement, but in there, we just have easement rights exactly for their private property.
Okay. Are we just, it wasn't clear if this was an easement to the town or?
No, 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 no. No, it's to the town's necessarily.
We don't need the town to be able to have access for inspection and stuff?
So the town, as part of the decommissioning agreement, there may be other requirements and we'll have to talk to the town attorney about what he's looking for.
And I put one of those in there.
I saw, you did put something, but I don't think that's going to be sufficient for the decommissioning agreement, but Warren Raplansky is the town attorney and we'll follow up with him.
Yep, that's fine.
Anything else?
No, just, I mean, I concur with Liz that we need to flesh out the documentation in 101-5 that's required. So it, it may be in here, but it might require a little more depth of discussion on some of the items.
And, Mr. Olson, would it be acceptable if you and Ms. Axelson communicated directly?
That's fine.
I want to make sure that you both have the same input for the complete plans and all the details.
Scott and I have met.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Let's start with the board.
I just have one question. On your EAF, you noted that as a habitat, you have endangered or threatened species, the bald eagle, on the property. Of the trees you're planning to take down, have you checked for nests?
Well, that's, we actually have a requirement, a tree clearing prohibition. We can't clear trees. And I, forgive me, I don't, it's in March.
April 15th.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's the 15th of March or the end of March, but.
It's typically April 15th or March 31st. It depends. It used to be you couldn't take down certain trees. Now it's basically all trees because they all have roots and rooks.
And we do have three larger trees that have to come down. Talked to TAD about that. We wanted to see if we could get that done beforehand. And her, her response, and she's not the board, was, ZBA is moving along. We should be done by, you know, March. And I, I don't know if that's going to be the case because if we don't get it done and we can't take those trees down, we're done. We can't get it up this year.
Just, I mean, just, the zoning board hearing, they won't be able to take any action until the planning board completes seeker.
Well, I'm going to, I was going to, depending on how this goes tonight, I was going to call the attorney for the ZBA tomorrow to say, I know that's what we discussed at the zoning board meeting, but would the zoning board consider just doing their own seeker on the application as uncoordinated review, which is perfectly legal, but it may not be within your typical process?
Well, so tonight, the board was going to declare intent to service lead agency in a coordinated review, even though it's unlisted?
Right.
So if you want to do that, then you should talk to this board about that tonight.
Well, I, I certainly can. I mean, I think that the ZBA could do that if they wanted to, but I, I didn't know what this board was going to do with seeker.
Does the ZBA, did they receive the visual impact analysis as well in their application?
They did.
Okay. Just go ahead and.
They generally don't do seeker?
They haven't done seeker in 15 years.
That's a scary.
They signed a protocol with us.
Also, also coordinated review.
No, that's just, they signed a protocol with us long ago so that the board would do its own seeker in circumstances where they're both involved. So you can certainly take that up, but I don't know how fast that would, or how much that would slow the process down for you, to be honest.
I don't know. I'm just trying to get those trees down at some point before March 31st.
That's in a month and a week.
Which seems ambitious to me, to be honest with you.
We can't do it, but I don't know why the applicant, I mean, I mean, not the applicant, we are the applicant. The owner cut down trees that they want to cut down, but I don't know if that's, would be bad for them before this town of ours.
We're not going to comment on that, trust me.
It's, I mean, the, the next zoning board meeting would be March 25th. If, if you had approval, it was not happening.
Well, I didn't, I know TAD was being, I, I didn't think it was when she said it, but she said, oh, it's going to happen by.
Because this board won't grant you approval until you receive your variance and you wouldn't be back before this board until April 1st.
In addition, tonight is the 19th and we circulate unless we ask for expedited review from SHPO, DC Planning and CAC. They have three days in which to respond. And that's three days after we get any new plans. So you'd really be looking at.
April.
Us not receiving anything until April, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Well, you had to ask.
No, it makes sense. It makes sense.
One of those things, you want to at least try to find out.
Oh, yeah, no, I just, you know.
I don't.
I would, never mind. I'll comment offline at some point if necessary. Is that the only question? Mr. Pickett?
The area you said this was going to enhance, was it primarily the Anderson School, you said, or?
Rick can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's one of the primary objectives, but it's not the only. It's still going to go beyond that. It's going to hit portions of Route 9, but it's, I don't know how, but, and we have information in our application that shows you, but it's not going to be miles and miles.
It's a small cell.
It's a small cell. It's, it's really designed to kind of like serve a hot pocket area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Welcome back from Cuba.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Gracias. Should I ask in Spanish or English?
As you see.
Actually, I don't have further questions. The chair addressed my concern about co-location.
Okay.
Can I just interrupt?
Well, I don't know if he, the concern isn't addressed, but he raised the question that I had.
Okay.
Is it the same case with the eagles as it is with the bats, that you can actually cut down the trees during those prohibition periods as long as you have an onsite monitor?
I think if you had a, yeah, like a biological assessment with that monitor, I, I think you might be able to. I'm not really familiar with it, though, and that's something, obviously, because of the situation, we're going to have to investigate.
Okay, so if that's something you're going to be investigating, you should let us know so we can incorporate that into the seeker findings and approval. Because if this board says you can't cut the trees during that period and then you decide you want to go ahead with the monitor, then you have to come back to this board to amend its findings and its conditions, so.
Yeah, with the applicant, your law says we, the applicant cannot cut the trees down. It's, I would just, you know, not totally clear about whether the owner can do what they.
Our law says that?
Your law says that.
Oh, right. The, well, the owner can't do it while there's a pending application.
I'm just going to say, here's, I'll go ahead and tell you straight out. It's a longtime policy of the town, including from town attorneys before, that while they might be able to, if this weren't before us, as soon as you submit and it's the area of disturbance that's, that's anticipated because of this application, that any kind of ground disturbances, you're doing it at your own risk in anticipation of an approval. And if it weren't given, you'd have to somehow restore it.
No, I understand.
So that noted, we have had a couple of solar array farms, solar farms, for solar arrays, where they've had monitors for the both Indiana bat and Northern Long Ear bat.
Okay.
And they didn't find any, and so they cut away. The DEC was fine with it.
Okay.
It's an echo location, sort of study the night before. I don't know how it's done with bald eagles. That might be different.
Right. You'd have to give us information, but if we could incorporate that into the findings rather than a prohibition.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm going to ask the client about that, you know, looking into that, obviously.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I have no further questions.
Mr. Oliver?
No further questions.
Ms. DiNapoli?
I just want to thank Liz for such a detailed, yeah, report. As always, duly impressed. And you raised some interesting questions, including the one that Michael spoke about was about combining, topping the top of the trees. And then we'll look forward to your answers.
Correct.
So everything that I was going to say has been addressed with, except for one strip topic, and that is, you say that you would be promising to co-locate with another self-service provider, but how would that happen? Is this such a, if this is so low that you can't go on the other one, how would that happen here?
That's just it. We said that we certainly would provide that opportunity. We're not going to restrict it.
But no one's going to be able to use it.
But that's, so, a lot of times municipalities, small cells are relatively new. Your law, it really doesn't take into consideration the small cells. So to have to require a co-location on small cells, industry-wise, it's not really going to happen that often. That's just the way the technology goes. Now, when the board was revising its law over the summer and I spoke with Warren Raplansky, he wanted to address that, but they didn't feel they had the time to do it. So they just addressed this planning board.
Yes, that was the recommendation that I wrote for it, was to, would give them time also for the moratorium, also to address small cell service technology. Seeing them in New York City, they're co-located everywhere. Light poles, buildings, you name it. And they're so small, they look like, kind of like shoeboxes or old speakers from old stereos.
Right.
For old people like me.
FM5G, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I disagree that they won't be co-located. I mean, I've seen them going on utility poles.
Well, the reason they won't be is because we want to keep the tower as low as possible. So our tower is just above the top of the trees. So.
I get it in this case.
Yes, it's co-located. That's what I'm saying, is that, but for most part, if you're in a situation like this, on a street, you may, but a lot of times, honestly, the wooden utility poles, depending on the equipment that it has to carry, may not structurally be capable of handling it.
So we're looking for a proliferation of poles in our future?
Only, only in areas where you have dense enough users to be able to utilize it. In other words, you might see it like right in the middle of Route 9 and through this area. And remember, this is not really so much about providing call services. It is people wanting all the internet stuff they do because that's how you have to have, you can provide it more seamlessly.
Right. But, I mean, can't you co-locate on buildings?
You can, but it depends on what the buildings are and what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
Right now, the major, well, I'm going to.
And whether you have a corner where you have.
We do co-locate on buildings where we can, if it's feasible, yeah.
Okay.
So just to summarize, I wanted to respond to Ms. Axelson's memo, Clark Patterson Lee. We're going to be referring tonight to the State Historic Preservation Office as well as the state's county planning. And I think this should go ahead and go to CAC, too, myself, just because there is archaeological sensitivity as well as an endangered or threatened species. Let me rephrase that.
Four sets, so.
I can, I can let them have one of my.
Well, I'm going to do a new one, right?
You can't.
Okay. No, I meant for the CAC, for the CAC.
We're asking for four complete submission sets, so that should be sufficient.
And the other question I have is, would the board like to go ahead and set a public hearing tonight? As I noted.
For April?
It would be April 1st, would be April Fool's Day. Is our first meeting in April?
That's fun.
The only reason I'm saying that is because otherwise, we could set it for, before that, The only reason I'm saying that is because otherwise, we could set it for before that, but we don't have a guarantee that we're going to hear from, from the other agencies during that time. But if you'd like, we could set it for March the 18th, I think it is, and then continue.
Sure, I'd be happy with that and roll the dice.
Okay. Before we read the resolution, Megan, a motion, does that sound okay with everyone else?
The 18th, would that be March 18th?
For the 18th? I don't think we're going to hear any public comment, to be honest with you. The Anderson Center never has much public comment. Nothing that goes on. It's not visible really from Route 9.
Exactly.
And in addition, when I first bought here years ago, it was considered a mysterious entity. They've done a fantastic job of getting more out into the community now. And so people now go by and they see the sensory garden up front that's been, won some awards locally, all that. So they're considered more a part of the community now, and people don't have the same kind of reaction to what's going on back there. So at any rate, Megan, a motion to set the public hearing for March 18th?
Same or second?
All in favor? Anyone has this resolution?
I do.
Yay.
Resolution classifying action under seeker and referring application to County Department of Planning and Development for Horizon Cell Tower at Anderson, Statsburg South Micro, February 19th, 2020, resolution number 2019-37, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under seeker; two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project, and directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to all involved and interested agencies once four complete application submission sets are received, which include, one, applications for site plan, special use permits and variances; two, complete updated plan sets; three, an updated environmental assessment form including EAF mapper; and four, signed letters of authorization from the applicant and the property owner. Three, directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239m of the General Municipal Law.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Can we add CAC to the bottom for the interested agencies?
And just to be clear, I'm assuming that by updated plans, you mean the ones that are, that were already submitted dated January 24, 20?
Yes, yeah, because the ones in the January 31st submission set are from November, October.
Can I make just one additional comment?
The plan set that, that I found that was most current was last revised January 24, 2020.
Yep.
Right.
I, I don't know how critical it is for this one, but for the next one that you're hoping to submit, it came up in the agenda meeting that you did the, not you personally, but the balloon test was done without any one of us being there.
So I addressed this already to Mr. Rolson, that's why I didn't, no, no, I just wanted to do it publicly. I wrote him a strong letter of remonstration. No, I'm just teasing. Typically, we like to, we like to be there rather than rely on photos. In this instance, we're all familiar with, or at least mostly familiar with the existing towers. It doesn't seem like a big deal. Also, the board usually likes to weigh in on receptor points. Your receptor points were fine, in my opinion, and I don't think anybody objected to them, because you chose the public points. For the next one, though, you should probably pass that by us. And I'll also say, I think in your response, you said you thought that those were receptor points agreed to by the town. If we even mention them informally, that's not the board doing it, so it needs to be done publicly, that's all. Generally, we all kind of agree anyway, but we never take action, as you know, in offline meetings. We just try to do general discussions.
Understood. And so for that other application, no, we have not done anything with the visuals. I would never do that with that type of an application, because you know the area better than I do, so you're going to know where you want your photos taken.
This is, generally speaking, considered to be a more sensitive area because of the resource of the river. There are a lot of historic resources around. That one, not so much in terms of its designation as something that would be scenic by residents, but it's located right next to a neighborhood, so I think we need to make sure that we address all the particular concerns that the neighborhood might have. By the way, I've already told some of the elected officials. I don't know this to be true. It'll be interesting to see. But that neighborhood does have green fields, has a lot of newer residents, you know, young people with kids. My friends who are young with kids don't have landlines anymore. They try to rely on cell phones. And I know you don't have good cell service out there, so. I also know, by the way, from going back and forth to Rhinebeck often, there are times when, for whatever reason, I get dead zones on Route 9, and I'm like, what? By the Anderson Center? So I'm aware that there are issues, and I'm a loyal Horizon customer. See, there are many of us up here. And I also know anecdotally that when I'm going down Quaker, I get dropped left and right, too, near where the next application is going to be. But it's a really tall tower up on a ridge as well, so. And again, none of us have the ability to really analyze the RF analysis like an engineer would. So we, I believe you've already been told, we have a request for escrow for an engineer who does just this for municipalities. From what I'm told from talking to him briefly, he does these pretty quickly, because he reads the same analysis, or the same analyses, I should say, to justify often, so he can weigh in as to whether this is a truly demonstrated need or not. But I mean, when I talk about the residents, I would be able to maybe give up the cost of a landline, but as I understand it, their response time is a lot faster if you would have more available service over there, so.
Oh, absolutely.
It'll be interesting to see. Anyway, we appreciate your making the application and the journey up. And if you have any questions, like I said, for what the updated plan should be, just confirm with Liz directly.
I will.
Do you have her contact or talk?
I do. I do all, I have the letter in my email.
And you have an email, yeah.
And it'll also give you her telephone number if you need to talk to her.
Absolutely.
Right, right. And I just want to chime in that on the bigger one, I guess it's Gretna, that I think, I don't know if the board's anticipating this, but it would be nice to be able to have a public balloon float type thing.
That's how we like to be there.
Okay, fine.
We were, the board, not this board, but-
A board.
A board. Us, the two of us were on it back at the time. We did, when we had a proposal for a golf driving range, we did a full visual impact analysis, had the public out, et cetera. We still got sued, but we won because we had a good record. And that's what's always important, to create a good record. And are you from the Anderson Center? Oh, okay. I just saw you nodding a couple of times about Anderson Center, thinking, "I don't think I've met you yet." We tried to know everybody over there. So at any rate, thanks for joining us, and we'll see you on the 18th.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is the discussion about our response to local law A, which is to allow two-family dwellings in all districts, which basically just means adding the town center historic district. But it does mean that now they would all require a special use permit, similar to the way accessory apartments are. Have I had a chance to read the letter?
Yes, thank you so much for capturing pretty much everybody's-
No, great. That was pretty much, that was pretty much great minds offering all their thoughts on it, so. Megan, a motion to authorize me to send it?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cynthia can go, yes.
Oh, I was going to say, I received a phone call from Don Westermeyer today about the two-family issue. And he was just concerned about the cost of conversion to a two-family, and he just wanted to remind the board members to remind applicants that not only do they have to get through the zoning process, but there's often a building code process, which can be difficult in the case of a conversion.
So that's a conversion, which is-
Yeah.
Part of that involves, you have to have a firewall.
Yep.
And this, the same issue occurs in accessory apartments. We had some neighbors of mine, the Hartmans, who wanted to put in an accessory apartment. They hadn't looked at all the building costs. They'd spoken to the architect, but he hadn't given them an estimate, so they went through our process and spent the money on the soft cost, only discovered that they'd never make enough money by renting out the accessory apartment for what it would cost to be able to have a kitchen. Because it's just, it's very expensive, so.
And there's egress issues.
Absolutely. If you have enough space, enough land, then you can certainly create a second family house, two-family house next to, I mean, next door. But that's different, and that's much more expensive typically than doing what we're talking about. So at any rate, thank you. I'm, should I be surprised that he contacted you? That's it. There's nothing else on the agenda. Megan, a motion to conclude.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.